Ask the order, ask everybody to stand.
You're saying better.
This side if you'll, if they work for.
Lord, we thank you that you permitted us to assemble this one order. Thank you, Lord, for these that are gonna take care of the business tonight. Lord, we ask that everything that we've done in decent, sincere, and order, touch everything that we say and do, forgive us of all any failures which are many, all these failures, we ask them online for that sake.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Snyder.
Here.
Councilwoman Fletcher. Councilwoman Dickers.
Here.
Councilwoman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Asbury. The quarter signer, Mayor Butcher.
Here.
And Attorney Keener.
Here.
And you have the court. Alrighty, next order of business is the regular meeting minutes of August the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
There was one mistake already, under the present, I omitted Melanie and I use, I keep using the same one, but then I didn't take copy out, so. Right. You set your flashlights on, on your phone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Run your battery down.
See, when I came to ten, I had lots of questions. Did you, did he, did you get hold of somebody about who to write the check to?
Yeah, already talked to him, it's already done.
Through the bank?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's in there on my desk. Alright, anybody have anything other than the one thing that I haven't mentioned? If not, we entertain a motion that we approve the minutes with one correction.
I'll make mention.
Okay, Mr. Melon, what'd you say, say the mark? All those in favor, say the five, say an eye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, say a word. Alrighty, uh, next John is the August twenty-third financial statements.
Yep, you'll see from August, our income was fifty-six thousand nine forty-three, forty-four. We had expenditures for the month of fifty-seven thousand seven twelve, forty-eight for a shortage of seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and four cents. Really, other than our workers' compensation blanket, our payment, um, there really wasn't a whole lot. That actually was seven, seventy-nine, seventy-eight, seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. We paid to travelers. Other than that, there really wasn't anything out of the ordinary.
Alrighty, heard the presentation of the financial statements. Anyone have any questions for John? If not, then we'll entertain a motion that they be approved as presented.
So moved.
So moved with Jacob, wait a second.
I'll second.
Say to Melody, all those in favor, say five, say an eye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, say a word. Alright, uh, don't worry, old business, anybody have anything to bring up under old business?
Really not old business, but we talked about the car show this weekend, it seemed like we had a pretty good crowd. Kinda we, everybody took a little bit of lessons of maybe what we could change next time, and we'll talk about that later, but anyway, I thought it was a pretty good moment.
Pretty good car show, pretty good cruising, car show the next day.
Wonderful bands.
Uh-huh.
Wonderful bands.
Yeah, music and everything, and then we've got to say Alice Blue won the cat call or something. So it was great, great deal, and, uh, you know, that's worked out real well, and I think everything went, went pretty well. I think the kids said, hey, what we have for the kids to do, but we didn't actually plan it, it was more of an adult thing, and, uh, but it was bad, sad that we couldn't do the car show before with the actual festival, so. But that was it, uh, and I think everything went pretty well, moving from there, so. Next order of business there then, under new business is the, uh, I'm gonna just talk to you a little bit about the action that happened, uh, actually, it was a pretty busy weekend, that weekend. We had the car that wrecked in town, knocked all the power out that night. Uh, we had the force main leaking again down at the playground on August the twenty-seventh. And then August the twenty-eighth, we had all the flooding around town, and, uh, many houses, uh, many streets were covered, uh, we had damages to the, uh, the bridge up here at the overhead bridge and, uh, everything else, uh, I think we've gotten most of those taken care of, uh. We had, uh, most of the, uh, people in town that had flooding at their houses, we had those taken care of. The car wreck from the Sunday evening was taken care of by Monday morning, uh, somewhere around four-thirty timeframe. But Sunday, uh, I was actually gone, had a call from Brian Williams, who travels to town, all the town, y'all know, y'all all know Brian. But he called me and he said, David, I believe he got a leak over in the park property again. So needless to say, I sent Kevin over there and sure enough, we did. And, uh, so in the meantime, you know, I said, well, let's see what we can do to get something fixed. Last time, I just ended up finding a company that would come in with an excavator and, uh, excavate it and fix it, so, uh, we had the city guys all ready to go in after we could get it dug and everything, so I had, uh, Solid Rock Contracting, which did our dredging of the creek and everything, come in. Uh, after we looked at it, it was actually more than one place leaking, about three or four places leaking. So we then decided, hey, we probably need to go ahead and try to fix this line and replace it totally. So I was in, uh, talking to Occidental Chemical, said, hey, we need that property, we need to be able to go ahead and use their property and put that line in. So they did give us a temporary easement, uh, before they do the final, uh, to go across the street and actually put that line in, so, uh. So we had two bids from, uh, one from Solid Rock Contracting and the other one from Wiseman Excavating, which did the West Reynolds Avenue. Other two bids, uh, Solid Rock was twenty-nine thousand eighty-three dollars and ninety cents. Uh, Wiseman Excavating was seventy-one thousand nine hundred dollars. They are an all, um, union job, uh, Solid Rock is not, so that's pretty much the big difference of the two bids. Uh, I had Triad Engineering here with us and, uh, you know, to give us some actual help and everything with it. They had already done the mapping and the work and everything from before, uh, so we were just waiting, we knew it was gonna have to be done, we just didn't know when, so, uh. Uh, Triad came back and said, hey, probably, you know, let's, let's use the Solid Rock Contracting bid, which we did. We also, from Core and Main in materials, you'll see that there's, uh, materials of twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-one cents. To get started, we purchased another seven thousand eight hundred dollars worth of materials, and we knew we had some excess in materials, uh, and so we took those back, the excess that we had, and they're stating right now it'd be a refund of around four thousand dollars. In the meantime, we had a visitation from, uh, DEP. DEP wasn't too happy that we were discharging sewage into the river, uh, which, you know, we're not happy to do that either. Uh, and then also having it run through the playground over through the creek and everything else, so. They had written us two non-money, monetary, uh, violations, and we are in process putting a letter together now to, uh, respond to those, but then we also ended up going to Zilem Rental, uh, out of Clendale. We rented a pump and all the, uh, attachments, uh, lines and everything else to actually pump sewage from our pump station over to the plant, uh, for actually about the last two weeks, so. They had a bid that they had given us before, it was about four thousand dollars per week, uh, so we anticipate seeing a bill somewhere in the range of about eight thousand dollars. What my recommendation was to you all and the couple texts and everything I've sent you, uh, is that we utilize ARP funds, which is an eligible expense for this. Uh, so actually, to take care of the, uh, the repair, replacement, uh, we went back and actually added a, an air valve, which had never been done to this plant, uh, the air valve was in those, in that materials numbers. Uh, but then the additional work from, uh, Solid Rock Contracting, the air valve, putting that in there, things about five hundred more dollars for them. And then also, when that property was filled down there, there was pieces of cement down there, that was as big as this table. And, uh, needless to say, when they pulled all that out, when the, uh, machine got on the asphalt down there, it tore that asphalt up, so there was some additional asphalt work that had to be done, and it was eleven hundred dollars, and, uh. So all in all, uh, I'm asking that everything that you see there besides the paving of eleven hundred and the, uh, labor work on the air valve, the five hundred dollars additional, so about sixteen hundred, besides the numbers that you have there. And then the pump and the attachments and all that, four thousand dollars about a week at a time, so approximately about eight thousand dollars. I took actually, uh, the one thing that they had in that bid was, uh, transportation to and from. Uh, I ended up, I went down and pulled the pump back myself with my own vehicle, uh, we used my equipment trailer and actually brought all the attachments, uh, they wanted a thousand sixty dollars to bring it up, take it back, so I did that with my own personal stuff, and, uh, so we don't have a bill for that extra thousand dollars.
We thank you for that.
No problem, and, uh, but that way, uh, we're able to get the work done, and, uh, we need to probably entertain a motion and a second for use of ARP funds for, uh, the work and the parts and everything that we have purchased, and then, uh, John and I was talking earlier today, when we get this approximately four thousand dollars back, we will redeposit that back in to the ARP account, so. So we'll need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to, uh, to use ARP funds.
Okay, got a motion with Jacob to utilize the ARP funds, we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Melanie. Any questions or anything? Now, now's the time. It, uh, it was a job that was needed to be done, and, uh, you know, uh, if not, DEP would have been breathing down our throat again, probably, uh, in the near future, so, um.
The, the work on the line is complete, correct?
Line is complete, it actually has up last Thursday at about three P M., it was put back in service. Uh, we actually, I had Kevin go in and call the spill line, let them know, I actually sent the DEP inspector an email, uh, myself, and told her that everything was fixed, everything was in service as it should be.
And if, um, everything works out, hopefully soon, the playground should be opening back up.
Yeah, give us probably about two weeks, uh, right now, we still have the road closed, they just finished the paving. Uh, past few days, I've been gone a few days, I think you all know that, so, with my wife, so, uh, but, uh, I've got, uh, you know, the paving's been done, we have picked up all the pipe on that street now, and we'll be all returned tomorrow, uh, for that. Next thing is pretty much running the street sweeper across that, uh, whole road. Uh, we had to cut some trees down there on the bank that goes up into the plant. If you get in and look at it, it's, I mean, a fine-looking job, and, uh, they rocked everything by the creek and everything, and uh, all the creek crossing and all the asphalt's been put back in that nail, and, uh, I think we're, uh, I think we're in pretty good shape with what we've got, so. But with that being said, unless somebody else, has anything else, all those in favor, say five, say an eye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, so, alright. Next thing you got is, uh, put on here, and we had this on the board and everything, uh, Canal County cleanup dates, and we actually did put this out to everyone, uh, the cleanup dates will start this Saturday, September twenty-third out at Elkview and at the old Herbert Hoover High School. Uh, we have always, uh, given them one of our garbage trucks and our two guys, uh, to go out with it, so we will do that again. And, uh, they actually do end up taking care of all the, uh, what we call the tipping fees, the dump fees at the dump. And then, uh, you, uh, what we've seen too is usually a check for like five hundred bucks, so, uh, so we'll see that coming. And then actually, uh, right after that, on October seventh, uh, will be one here locally at, uh, Cabin Creek, so, uh, so for everybody's information, and I think everybody should have seen, you know, one of the slips in the mail, so, uh, so we did get that out. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is Health Right, uh, the Free Services Clinics and everything, and West Virginia Health Right, uh, actually comes out. We actually had, uh, Health Department in here a couple weeks ago, uh, for tent shots and everything from the flooding. Uh, so they did take care of that, and then, uh, uh, West Virginia Health Right were actually set up across the street. Uh, they may plug indoor power, but they've got generators too that they can use, but, uh, actually, the first one will be tomorrow. And it will be referrals, testing, vaccines, HIV testings, Hep C testing, uh, you know, they'll actually talk to anyone about uh, resources, if somebody needs help on something, things like that, so, uh, so a lot of good things to happen with them. Uh, next week, September twenty-seventh will be the next one, and then they'll come back in October for two dates, and it'll be October the eleventh and October the twenty-fifth. This was actually sent out to everybody too, uh, so everybody should have seen a copy of this. And then the next thing will be flu vaccines, just as soon as they get those in, they'll actually bring those up. So then we'll have flu vaccines and everything here, and all this is free, uh, so feel free to come out and see them tomorrow, talk to them about different things, and go from there.
Will they have the new COVID shots tomorrow?
Uh, they should have, if not, they should be able to tell you that they'll have them maybe in the next week or something. Don't have the flu shot, yeah, is what they told me the other day. Now, they couldn't surprise me bringing them out. I haven't talked to Rhonda, which is one of the girls down there that I've talked to.
It's easier for me to get a word of what fear than it is to tell me something by six.
Just come up and ask them tomorrow and, and see what they tell you, and, uh, you know, that way, should be able to get them here probably over the next three visits or whatever, if they don't have something, that, that will. Any questions on any of that? So, Free Services, so tell, tell to your neighbors, everybody around, and we have sent it all out in our, uh, information that goes out first of the month, so everybody should have. Next thing is approval of the invoices, don't know of anything, personnel issues, uh, we do have a candidate for the street department. Uh, we were trying to, uh, possibly talk to him this past weekend, but, uh, we failed to do so. When I called him, he didn't call me back until we were ready to go up on stage and pass out trophies and all that, so. I just told him, I said, right now is no good time, so, uh, so, uh, I was not gonna be here the next three days, but now I will be calling tomorrow, but I will be here Thursday and Fridays, so if y'all wanna maybe do something.
I believe in Friday vacation.
Okay. We're doing Thursday night.
Nothing.
I can eight thousand.
Thursday night, we'll see if we can get together and then we'll bring that candidate back with our recommendation from, uh, council.
What time?
Okay?
What time?
Uh, six o'clock, does that sound good?
Yeah, as long as he can do it, yeah.
Yeah, I'll call him and I'll let you all know.
Well, we'll, uh, probably do, uh, 'cause I think there was two applicants, correct?
Uh, we got one, the other applicant, uh, could get ahold of, and the phone, uh, do you must have given us your name correct?
Um, so we may call a special meeting if, um, the Personnel Committee, you know, Lex, Lexton and Adam actually will also talk to him, and Adam recommend him, of course, council has to, we'll bring it to council, so we might look for that. I don't know, I'd be a special meeting next week or so, so.
I'm available Thursday, then after next Tuesday, I'll be gone for two weeks.
Okay, so we need to do that before.
Sometimes we're down on Tuesday, it might be, or sometimes.
Okay.
Alrighty, so that's, we'll do that. Next thing on the agenda is the Police Report. I think everybody has that in their pocket, I don't know, wasn't a whole lot on there, uh, but, um. I think there's anything there, uh, yeah, accidental, we can say. Uh, yes, uh, we probably didn't have, because we didn't have some, uh, cash, so, yeah. County, you know, the old thing. Oh, let me see. Any questions from anybody on that? If not, we'll move on, we've got, uh, let me see, now we've got comments from the mayor. I think I mentioned the August twenty-eighth flooding, uh, we did actually take some action today in the sanitary, uh, meeting today. Purchased a couple new pumps and everything to, uh, help alleviate some of the flooding in people's basements. Uh, we have had, uh, supplies back here in, right next door in the computer room, uh, for the last, I guess, almost since the flooding, about three or four days afterward, uh, so we've still got a few things left, but, uh, we'll probably be closing that out. Probably by the end of this week, there's not a whole lot left back there, but, um, a few things, but, uh.
I thought they, I think they actually wrapped up today.
Okay, well, I told them we would go ahead and get the, uh, some of the bleaches left, we'll probably put it either back in the street department or down sanitary plant, there's some other things in there, but, uh, we'll get it out, and we might even take it down here to City of Hope, they're still operating theirs.
Yeah, they just got another truck in today.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll see, we'll go from there. Paving on West Reynolds Avenue, uh, hopefully that's gonna happen here within the next two weeks and get that done, um. So we are waiting right now on the gas company, as I mentioned, last month, the gas company was a little bit apprehensive about helping us pay for. Uh, needless to say, I sent that, or I sent Mount Air Gas's, uh, Senior VP an email, uh, last week, so the, uh, guy that runs the Houston Yard, uh, was sitting down there where Jacob is on Friday, and he told me that, uh, think he'll get something worked out, so, uh, so we kinda had a little, uh, discussion, and, uh, so he didn't like it too well, and I went to the top of the line, but I told him, I said, I think he'll get anything out of you. And, uh, West Virginia Water has already said that they would only up somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars, and I told Mount Air Gas that kind of expected the same thing from them, so, and I think that'll make us whole on West Reynolds Avenue and be able to get that done. Uh, property tear downs, they are working on asbestos over on Thirteenth Street today. Over on the garage apartment over there that we've had many complaints on for many years, uh, but they did start working on the asbestos over there. I got a list from the county today, a couple people that I gave volunteer applications to, one of them was, uh, Jamie and Angie Kincaid, that's in the list to be voted on Thursday at the Regional Development Authority Meeting, which I sit on. So I'll be there and make sure that they get a couple yes votes, and I think we'll be good. And the other one was for Josh Scott, uh, so, uh, over on River View, so, it's over by, uh, John Scott, right, right next door to his house, so, calls from the Asbury Church. So we'll get those torn down, uh, like I said, the asbestos is being worked on right now on Thirteenth. Uh, they should be moving to the house here on Dupont Avenue, they should be moving over on, uh, the property over on River View, the Soldier Way property, so, and then the ones on Melon Avenue, so. So we'll get that done. The next thing that I'll say is the ice machine is in, uh, we do have it back, we did put it in the kitchen area, and so at least we can get some use out of it, and everybody, you know, that comes in, rents a building or anything like that, will have the use of the ice machine. So it's working well, and, uh, it actually, we supplied ice this weekend to Connie's and to, uh, I think, uh, barbecue, Olds Boys. So it'll take care of a few, but it won't take care of many, yeah, like if we did a festival, but, uh, so that part is done and in and and put to bed, and we've actually, they actually sent us a bill, can't believe it. But they did, so that's, uh, that part's done, and then I had Miss Blue for the cat call, so. We've already mentioned that, but she won, so, congratulations.
Well, thanks.
Uh, the next thing is items from Town Attorney, Ray, anything?
No, nothing.
Nothing, and, uh, so we'll go to council, so we'll start out, uh, Mark, anything?
Only thing is, um, I'll be picking up where Connie left off with K R T.
Yes.
And it starts this Thursday at eight forty-five.
Yeah, 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 uh, I've done employment on K R T board, so I had Connie representing me on that board, and, uh, actually talked to Mark about taking that over, and he said he surely would, so I did send a note to Sean Hill, and so Mark said he would pick that up, so, uh, so he'll start, like he said, on Thursday, so, so we're good there. Anything else?
That's it.
Alright, Sean?
No.
Nothing? No? Melanie?
I'm ready to bring it up. We will be having the Halloween party for the kids on thirty-first.
I guess we need to really, I've got that note, I didn't even mention that. But we need to set October thirty-first as Halloween. So if somebody wants to put that in form of a motion.
I'll put it in a form of a motion.
Okay, got Melanie's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. And we'll set that as Halloween. Usually, we do six to seven, then we do the party at seven, so that work.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll get that out in our Melanie's. Anything else there?
Just want to thank everybody that did participate in helping with the car show and everything. I think it was a very good success. Like you said, it would have probably been a lot better if we could have had it when we had the festival. But I think everybody enjoyed theirsself, and we had some good giveaways. And, you know, people seemed pretty happy with it. That's it.
All right, thanks. All right.
Jacob? Nothing from me.
Nothing from you? Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to allow visitors to address Council?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Melanie, you have a second?
Second.
Second with Jacob, all those in favor, say five, say no?
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? All right. Anybody in the audience have anything?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
What happened to the flower pots that were on the, on the welcome signs to Bell?
We just removed those.
Well, I guess so.
Yeah, yeah. We did, we just felt like that they maybe weren't aesthetically good where they were and everything. And instead of just trying to do some like, we talked about maybe doing some flower pots on the poles and things like that. And just getting them off the welcome to Bell signs. And so that was just kind of a decision by some of the council members just to remove those.
Okay.
So we did.
Well, I think it's a shame.
Okay.
Just saying.
What if we done like plants in front of them?
Yeah, that would be, that would be pretty, yeah.
We had a lot of people say that they felt like they were coming into a cemetery. The way that they were set up, so we're trying to come up with something different.
I just think adding a little bit of color was nice.
Sure.
That was my.
No, I agree. I didn't like the planters, the, because at one point, it was plastic flowers on them.
Oh, was it?
And it looked pretty bad.
Okay. I don't, I don't have a see plastic.
My wife mentioned that she thought some colored mums in the front of it would look good.
Yeah, something that would just lack, just a little pop of color, yeah.
No, I agree.
I know, it's not a big deal, but.
No, I agree with you, I agree.
Yeah, we talked about when we put those lights and everything there, possibly maybe cut that out, put like little planter in there or something like that.
Right.
And so we need to, we need to do something there. So we'll put, we'll put the Beautification Committee on that. So why don't you, why don't you work with Mark, we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
And that way, we'll just throw that on you two, how's that?
Okay.
Or you three, how's that?
Yeah.
And see what you all can maybe design or throw together their force. And, you know, we can, we can definitely do something like that. But we just felt like it just wasn't, I think like John said, I think, I think a lot of people thought, "Man, it looks like a cemetery."
Oh, oh, well, I never thought that, but I didn't know they were artificial flowers.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll see, you know, go from there. And then, you know, actually, this past week, thanks to some of the council members, who went down and cleaned up around the underpass.
Yeah.
Got that all cleaned up for the car show and everything.
That's good.
You know, so that, we did that back when we did the festival. We went down there a couple nights, and they even drove me down there a few nights. And then this time, I wasn't around. I haven't been around for a couple weeks. But Mrs. Fletcher's not doing the graves, so she's still got some heart problems. We just got back, we drove in from Cleveland today.
Oh.
So it wasn't, wasn't, wasn't good.
I'm sorry.
So we'll see. But so I don't know, but I thank all of you for working and getting the underpass cleaned up and everything and taking care of those things, so.
Yeah, if you guys are doing that, give me a call. I don't mind getting out and helping picking up some stuff, you know. Yeah.
The only thing you got to worry about there is these nuts, they won't run over you.
Oh, really?
And there's some nuts coming down through there.
They whip around.
They just, you know, we sent, I sent a street sweeper down there and had them sweep it and everything.
Right.
But the people, when they start down through there, I was parking my truck up top of the hill last time, they still slide down through it.
Right.
They did everything but block it off. Maybe we just need to block it off for a couple hours.
Hey, what's the timeline for the wall down there? Get their full paint?
Through paint, it'll probably sometime through the spring.
Yeah.
Because school, you know, that's who we were talking to. And, you know, we're getting too cold to paint now. And then Bell Chemical Company just changed their name to... Something that means. I'll look it up here in the news. But they, they sold the company. And Cornerstone Company out of Louisiana sold this company out. It's Bell Chemical Company, no longer. And it's now Ethan or something like that, I mean.
Is that the wall down on the hill?
No, no, it belongs to the state, but they were going to paint.
Oh.
And they're telling me now that they'll, they'll still paint.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, and then I've been told by a couple people, and I've got some state people looking into this. They said that they're supposed to pave Route sixty through Bell down toward Kimore's before winter, so.
Oh, wow, that's great.
But I've got some people, while the governor's office is supposed to be telling me, is that true or false? But I have not heard that yet, so. But the painting of the wall, painting of the mural, or the wall down here, the underpass and everything else. So we're still working on those.
Yeah.
And but I'd say sometime by springtime, we, we should see some things happen there.
It's very difficult.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
I was kind of disappointed in the car show.
You were?
Yeah.
Okay.
I brought my car. I brought my car to put in the car show, and I wouldn't put it in.
They wouldn't?
No.
Well, here, give it to me.
It's a little.
Give me fifteen dollars and I'll wait.
That's the entry fee.
Yeah, you gotta pay the entry fee.
But I wouldn't even type that?
Well, I will. I'm still trying to pull in as many dollars as we can. And I'm terribly sorry. We'll print her up her certificate again, anticipation. But anybody else?
I do, I have two things, actually. Some residents were complaining that they came into the town hall to ask for a copy of the ordinance, but they can't get it. So how do we get a copy of the ordinance? Is there a way to get those?
Ordinance for what?
The town ordinance.
The entire ordinance or?
Yeah, it's only seventy-five pages.
Huh?
Seventy-five pages, yeah.
If they want the entire, yeah, we'll give to them, but they'll, they'll have to buy it.
Yeah, do you have a cost of how much that'll be, so people know?
Twenty-five cents a page. I didn't look the ordinance, what it is.
Okay, but they can get it.
Yeah, I saw your comment on that.
Yeah.
It was never mentioned.
Well, they're also saying they've been asking for the meeting minutes too, and they can't get those as well.
They're right there in the book.
Okay.
Both the sanitary board and the council meeting, nobody's asked me for it. But of course, I'm not here during the day, but man, we're telling me the one, I'm sending them to me about it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they are available for people to get.
Absolutely.
Okay. My second thing is I have just a statement I want to make. I wrote it down so I can make sure I can get everything out. I'm speaking today to make a verbal complaint against the mayor and another council member who is running a private town Facebook page group, which is being used to post official public notices, make official town announcements, and listing open town jobs available. This group only has three hundred and twenty-two hand-selected members by the mayor and the town of over twelve hundred citizens. I'd like to remind each of you that when you were sworn into the town of Bell Council, you promised to uphold the Constitution. I feel that not only my First Amendment rights to free speech are being violated, but also over seventy percent of this town residents by our elected official using a social media platform to conduct downtown business, but censoring who may see or respond to those posts. I respectfully request that since this town does not have an official Facebook page, that since this is the official social media platform that the council has decided to share public town information and discussions, that it be open to me and anyone else who was deleted off this page once the mayor was elected. By making this complaint public, I'm taking the first step to stand up for not only my rights, but all residents on this issue, along with giving you the opportunity to fix this mistake before other legal means may be necessary. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I don't.
All right. Next thing is the adjournment of the meeting. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Melanie, second, second or Mark? All those in favor, say five, say no?
Aye.
Thank you all.